Was also calling out people during the game.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to reconvene this, the school board meeting. I guess, first, I'd like to thank everybody's effort last week for the homecoming week. I thought it was a wonderful week of activities with a lot of input from, from the administration, from the teachers, from the students, from their parents. So it was, it was a nice thing to see if the community pulled together around. And generally speaking, they had great weather and, and lots of fun things. So the school looked great and it was a good time, so.
John, we should recognize Karen's effort putting that all together.
Yes, yes. Karen, thank you for that. And, and the dedication on, on Saturday night was terrific. And, and it's nice to see that out today, so. The first thing on our formal agenda is to approve the draft minutes from the regular meeting from September. Did anybody have any comments or questions or things they wanted to add or change on the minutes? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Can I get a second? All in favor? Aye, thank you. So, first up, Mr. Coate.
Jamie Cody from the Bonde D O group is here to present our audit.
Good evening, members of the board. We have completed the audit of the Bronxville Unified, or Union Free School District's financial statements as of June 30, 2019, and we've issued our report, which is in front of you, dated October 17th, which is today, 2019. Also in front of you is our required communications letter and the financial statements for the extra classroom activity fund. As some of you know, we've previously met with the audit committee and we discussed our audit and the financial results in detail. I'm here tonight to provide a summary for the board. We have issued unmodified opinions of the district's financial statements, and this is the highest level of assurance that can be provided by a CPA firm. I'd just like to go through some of the financial highlights. First, we will talk about the budget, general fund budget. So the district had a positive revenue budget variance for the current year. Actual revenue exceeded the budget revenue by about $113,000. The district also had a positive expenditure budget variance for the year. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted by about $504,000. The actual general fund results for the year, they saw expenditures, the actual expenditures exceeded the revenue by $343,000. So that was, we'll call it a loss for the year, but this was a planned loss as the district applied $500,000 of, in 2018 to be used, $500,000 of fund balance in 2018 to be used in the 2019 fiscal year. So, overall, you would actually be, using fund balance would be $200,000 ahead. So that $343,000 loss actually decreased fund balance to about $7.5 million. The seven five, $7.5 million that's broken down into a few buckets, 4.8 of that is restricted and is to be used for certain reserves. $700,000 is assigned, and that means it's specifically earmarked for certain things. With, of that 700, about $500,000 is going to be used in the 2020 budget. So that leaves about $2 million in unassigned fund balance, which is 3.97% of your 2020 budget. And that is below the 4%, that is the regulated maximum that a school district can keep. So those are the, the high-level results for the year. You know, our audit, we had no difficulties in performing our audit. We had no adjustments, no disagreements with management, and it went very well for, as an audit can go. So with that, I would see if there's any questions.
Would anyone from the audit committee like to just talk a little bit about their discussions? Go ahead.
We had a very exciting audit committee meeting. First of all, I would thank, like to thank everybody that serves on the audit committee. It's definitely a dedicated group and we had a very robust conversation with Jamie. We spent a great deal of our time after Jamie walked us through the whole thing, looking at the other, the pensions and the healthcare, just so we could understand not only the assumptions that were made by the experts that support the accounting firm, but just, just where we stood overall, because those are big liabilities for us that we, we need to keep focused on. Jamie also shared with us, based on a question that was asked about what are future risks that we face, and cyber security, again, was his top answer, and the fact that we need to stay focused on what happens in that whole realm. And Roy assured us that we would have some presentations on that going forward. So we asked all the traditional questions that you ask about the, you know, the conservativeness or the aggressiveness of the estimates and where there need disagreements, any waived audit adjustments, all of those types of very exciting topics. And we were very, very comfortable in the answers we were given.
Great. This is your, your second year with us doing the audit, or is it the third?
I think it's our third.
Third.
Third, okay. Any questions?
How would you characterize our overall financial health?
Well, compared to, well, if you look at it from a full accrual basis, you do, actually do have positive net position, which, part of that is having a large OPEB liability. And from school districts that we see, there's not many that have overall positive net position. So, you know, I think if you were to think of, of yourself in a, you know, compared to other school districts, it's, I think you fare well.
Thanks, Jamie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
So we have, I think, a resolution to accept the external audit and the report, which is next on the agenda. So can I get a motion to approve the resolution regarding the acceptance of the independent external audit?
Move.
All, any discussion or questions or comments? Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Bonasano, I think it's...
Great, thank you. Hi, everybody. I just want to echo John's comments about homecoming and thank Karen and the Athletic Council as well. I don't know if you noticed all the new signage that's been out there this year, outside in the building, outside the building and inside the building. You know, if you go by the main gym, the entranceway, it really looks terrific and the whole branding idea that came out of the Athletic Council folks has really made a difference, I think, in the way we look and present ourselves. So I want to thank their efforts and, and, because it was a great week and the kids had a great time and it was really a lot of fun. And our exciting announcer at the football games as well, which was just a delight for everybody in the crowd. It was a good week. I also want to let you know that today was our second day of the tri-states visit. As you know, every three years, we have a, a visit from tri-states to do a review area. And this year, the focused, we're focused on looking at how do we know our kids are growing in, in the area of the Bronxville Promise. And it's been a really nice couple of days so far. I can tell you that the visitors have been very impressed with what they've seen. In particular, they interviewed a number of our, our students and did, students did a number of presentations of their portfolios and such, and it was really great to see. And it was, I felt very proud listening to our students and the work that they're doing, as well as our staff. And I want to thank Mara for her efforts in coordinating that. It's a lot of work to put it all together. You're, you know, you're on pins and needles a little bit, even though it's a critical friends group, it is, you know, you're on display and they're really tearing apart everything that you do and asking really deep questions about the work that we do. And it's not easy, so Mara, thank you for those, for those efforts. Well done. And we'll be getting a report, you know, following the visit, we do get a report, and I'll be happy to share that with the board and ask Mara to present that when it, when it does come in. I know, Dan, I'm going to steal this thunder a little bit, but we did have the recent rainfall yesterday, and very happy to announce, we had no flooding on either the elementary school side or the Meadow Avenue side, so the new storm drain is doing what we hoped it did. No surface water. So I can tell you, Mike was jumping down like a little kid. No, he put his galoshes on and nowhere to go, but it was nice. So all four pumps were running for quite some time, so it was nice that the flood mitigation system is working the way we had hoped. So let's hope it continues that way. I don't want to speak too much in case the next one doesn't work as well, but so far, so good.
Just in time, pipes.
Yeah, just in time, pipes. So let it rain. And at this point, I'm going to ask Aaron Kind, our, one of our guidance counselors, to come up to provide an update to us. If you remember, Aaron attended a Harvard Institute at the end of June last year. We had asked him to go up and start to see what he can come back with, learn from other counselors from around the country. Aaron did that for us and he had a lot of really interesting information. We've had some discussions since he's been back and did ask him to come to provide the board with an update, because I think you'll find some of the stuff that he's going to talk about fairly interesting. So Aaron, welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Before I walk you through my kind of recap and new initiatives from the Harvard Summer Institute, I just want to thank Roy and Rachel and Ann and Ann for supporting me and allowing me, I guess, to miss a few days of, of work. It was the end of a school year and that can be a kind of prickly time, but, you know, the district's value on professional development is clear through their support of me attending this institute, and I thank them very much. Okay, so I'm going to recap my experience. I want to highlight a little bit of the programs and services that we're currently providing, and then talk a little bit about new initiatives and long-term goals. So again, the end of last school year, I was at Harvard for a few days. You know, there's over 200 participants and similar to the landscape of college admissions, there were international schools represented as well, Qatar, Colombia, the Philippines, some countries that I couldn't find on the map. It was quite dynamic. And that was really on the high school side, international schools, private schools, and obviously public schools. The higher ed side, you can see some of the deans of admissions that were represented. Bates was there, Columbia was there, somebody from Michigan was there, UT Austin, and obviously Harvard, Stanford Brown, and Virginia. And what was cool, I'm sure many of you have been to conferences before, you tend to go from one big ballroom to another big ballroom and stop for coffee and then go to the next, you know, next meeting. So this was multi-day and they served us breakfast and lunch and dinner, so, you know, I'd get my eggs and I'd sit down and like Logan Powell from Brown would sit down next to me, and next thing I know, I'm having breakfast with the dean of admissions from Brown. And it was just a very, you know, cool, unique, interesting experience just to kind of hear about, you know, what these sort of celebrities in their field, in my field, are, you know, kind of deal with day in and day out. Session-wise, there were, so sort of like three tiers of, of session topics. One were, one was led by the, by the colleges, and so that was the how admission decisions were made. That specific top, that specific session was led by UVA, Brown, and Harvard. Another sort of tier of meetings that I attended looked at really like the broad bird's eye macro view of demographics and the landscape of college admissions. And then the third tier was really, was, was led by school counselors, was led by directors of counseling, directors of college programs at various high schools throughout the, the US, and actually international as well. And that was more like, these are deliverables that you should be providing at your high school to your students and your families, and that is in a later slide, which talks about some of the things that we're already doing that I also heard. So this, this first slide's really about Harvard, but it can really be extrapolated to students in this, I'm sorry, to colleges in this like very selective, highly selective admissions pool criteria. The first thing I want to say, one of the things I hope you take away from the next little while is colleges are accepting students. It's not test scores or G, or GPAs or a list of extracurriculars or classes. They're accepting people. And you can see, and you all know, you know, that getting into college has become more and more difficult as, you know, time has gone on. Specifically at Harvard, right, they, the dean of admissions there talked about how they have four times as many applicants with perfect GPAs as they have spots for, right? And you can see the numbers of perfect SAT scores. And so the dean of admissions, Bill Fitzsimmons, talked a lot about like accepting humanists, accepting people. How are they going to be on campus? How are they going to be in the dorms? How are they going to be in the classroom? What are they going to contribute? What are they going to bring? And this is what you'll see in later slides, what I think we need to do here as a department in Bronxville, talk to our students and families more about who they are and what they're doing and how the impact that they have in high school is going to, for lack of a better word, make them more attractive to whichever college that they're applying to. Harvard also talked about their faculty in the admissions process, and, and this too is common at very highly selective institutions. So, as an example, I, I used to work at the Bronx High School of Science, which is one of the specialized high schools in New York City. You had to take a test to get into that. So it was kind of like the top 1% of the 1% in public school. And so we had a lot of students doing like high, high-level science research, doing sort of like solving crazy math problems. And students still do, and students from Bronxville do as well, they submit their abstract, you can submit a math problem you're working on. And as an admissions representative, like you don't know what this stuff really means because that's not your skill set. So you pass it along to the faculty, and what they were trying to make us aware of is, you know, at Bronx Science, the student might be doing like amazing research, but is it amazing at Harvard? Is it amazing in the state of New York, in the Northeast, in the country, in the world? And when it gets passed along to the faculty, you know, there's a lot of things that can come up, right? Like the research might actually not be as amazing as we think at Bronx Science, right? Like this might not be grad, undergraduate Harvard-level work. They might not have faculty members doing this type of research, right? And so that's where, you know, we talk about fit with our students through the college process, like that's something that sometimes is just like, you know, a square peg in a round hole, like it's just, they don't do that research at this institution. And so, you know, there's a lot of different things that they're looking at, and as I'll say later on in the presentation, very little of it is what class you take, what your grades are, and what your test scores are. Which brings me to holistic admissions. So you may have heard this term, I have a definition on the next slide that I'll talk about in a second. I think here too is where we can do more education around, and I'll tell you what our plans are for that. You know, the whole student, right? I'll just get to it. So this is actually from Davidson, which is a nice liberal arts college. This actually came to me in an email as I was putting together the presentation, so I felt like it was like a perfect kind of aha email. And it outlines, in order of importance, what Davidson, but also like highly selective institutions are looking for, right? So, you know, having the perfect GPA is great, it's, it's not enough, but they're looking, you know, they're aware of that, right? They're, so they're looking at your rigor, they're looking at your success, so rigor being the classes you're choosing, choosing to take. But in three and four is really where like the committee work is done. Those are the discussions that they're having about different students and how they're going to fit in and the impact that they had in their high school and the impact that they're going to have on college, on their college campus. And it, you know, it marries actually quite nicely with, you know, the, the discipline, dispositions of the Bronxville Promise in terms of leadership and service and involvement and impact and critical thinking, right? And so this is where, two, I think the department could do a better job of speaking to parents and students about their role in high school and how that's going to play out in college. You know, we often speak to students about, are you getting involved? Are you on a team? Are you in a club? And we do that primarily because doing those things are fun, right? Like we want this to be a positive experience when they come to high school. We know as counselors, this is also sort of being, I think the best word is maybe scored, right? So if you followed some of the articles about the recent Harvard admissions lawsuit, and you dug a little bit deep into it, as I did, you know, their, Harvard admissions and other admissions offices as well are literally assigning points or, or marks or, or scores to qualities of students, right? And so that's where like this gets a little bit subjective, and that was like part of the lawsuit, which I'm not going to go into, and were they unfairly, you know, judging certain students, and, and that's not what I'm here to talk about, but this is what admissions officer, this is like their work, right? You know, if you, if you think about at your college or whichever college you're representing, everybody has the same grades, the same test scores, the same classes. Not everybody's making an impact in their high school, not everybody's starting clubs, not everybody's president of their class or their junior class or whichever class, not everybody's in the youth group, not everybody's on the youth council. So these are ways to differentiate yourself, I guess is maybe the best word, that students need to know about and we need to like, again, create more awareness of. And then lastly, you see testing, right? And, you know, testing, I want to like, ugh, like testing is really like this sort of nasty thing that I know collectively as a counseling department, we hope is, is going away. It's also constantly changing as with the recent news from the ACT that's allowing you to retake sections multiple times, which, you know, kind of leads one to believe like what does your score even mean if you took the same section eight times? Right, it's not, it's no longer, it's no longer valid or reliable. And colleges are seeing that. Excuse me. So just moving to kind of like the next sort of track of, of sessions, there was a lot of discussion about changing demographics. This graph should somewhat represent the demographics of the United States over time. And so for colleges, and this, you know, is just, this is what's out there and, and worth being aware of, colleges are wondering how they're going to serve the three, the four different types of students that, whose population is growing over time versus historically the white students' population that they've been serving for quite some time. And so, you know, and this came up from the Bates presentation, you know, I'll be the first to say that when a college goes test optional, it's a great step for that institution. But what they also won't tell you is sometimes that's done to attract more applicants. More specifically, applicants that maybe haven't historically applied there or ended up attending there. So colleges are constantly looking for ways to rebrand themselves, re, you know, have counselors reassociate them with different qualities, different messages, different visions to attract a different student population. And so just again, from the higher ed side, this is something that they're sort of dealing with and, and working to prepare for. And it's also why when a lot of our parents go to college tours, they hear about first-generation students, low socioeconomic students, because that college wants those students to be there because that's kind of going to be the majority of high school graduates in, in a few years, sort of stereotypically speaking, if you will. And then lastly, from the conference, this sort of look at what we should be doing as a school with our students and families. And so again, there were a number of sessions about essay-writing workshops, recommendation letter-writing workshops, just services and programs that other high schools are, are providing. And so I just wanted to take a moment to like kind of list, sort of, this is more like the major things that are happening at different points throughout the school year. You know, I've, this is my fourth year here, some of these things are new, even in the past four years, specifically the junior workshops, which is definitely not something that all high schools do, and I believe is great, and we're going to continue to work on that, which we'll talk about in a little bit. I think like two years ago, Barbara and I made the, a counseling guide, which was kind of like a, broke down grades nine through 12, what to do, what to think about, which was sort of at the request of some constituents. And you can see we're just, you know, we're, we're adding to our repertoire, as you will see also in the, in the next slide, you know, we're, we're open to new ideas, we continue to stay on top of best practices. I like read, you know, I read so much that I kind of forget what I'm reading sometimes that, I don't know if anybody else feels that way. But, you know, we're part of list serves and, and school sharing ideas, and, and you'll see some of what's kind of blossomed from that in a second. So new initiatives. Probably first and foremost, which I'm most excited about, which took quite some heavy lifting, November 6th, I think that's the Wednesday, November 6th at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria, you all are the first to hear about this, we are going to have an admissions case study event. This was something we did at Harvard, actually, for quite some hours, you know, upwards of four or five hours. So Harvard provided us with sample applications to their school, and we sat, you know, maybe there was like 12 or 15 of us with Harvard admissions representatives and talked about these students that applied to Harvard and, you know, whether we should accept them, deny them, waitlist them, what have you. And what was interesting to me, aside from the outcomes of, of what we discussed, very, very little discussion about their classes or their test scores or the rigor of their program. We read teacher recommendation letters, we read their essay, Harvard has a few supplements, we read, read those supplements, we read their counselor letter, and we just talked about qualitative things for an, almost an hour on each student. Obviously, when you apply to college, you don't get an hour, but, you know, we had some time and we were like just spitballing, and so we had a really like interesting discussion about who is this student, how are they going to fit in here? Can, can we support whatever it is they want to work on? How are they going to be in the dorm? How are they going to be, you know, will they be a man or a woman of Harvard? And, and that was, that's like the work they do, right? And, and I'm excited to bring that to the community. We're going to have a few college representatives to help the counseling department run that, and that's going to be shared with the, with the district, actually, hopefully tomorrow. So we hope you all are definitely invited, please, November 6th. Just continuing to go through this, this was feedback that we heard from, from families. I think it was also maybe some feedback from Marty Brooks's report. We may have, we, I believe we had this in the past, but we're going to bring back some standardized testing info night. As much as I just sort of talked about how bad they are, they're a necessary evil for most students, so we're going to have somebody from Bespoke come speak to the families of 10th grade students, which is kind of like the perfect time to figure out which direction you're going in regarding which test. So that event is in January, that gentleman's confirmed. Again, you know, this was through feedback, I, this year, or last month, I put together a newsletter, which involved, which included some of these things that I'm reading that I, you know, can't always keep straight, but just like a really broad brush stroke. We did this with ninth graders, we're doing this with 10th graders, this is what you can expect for next month, here's some interesting articles that I read, or that we read. And then sort of, lastly for the slide, but definitely not lastly for initiatives, and this came up at Harvard, like, you know, it was kind of like, whenever possible, get the college to come in and talk about what it is that the counseling department often talks about. So to that end, Monday is our junior post-high school planning night. I believe he's the senior admissions director of Southern Methodist University, Rod Jackson. We have a great relationship with him and, and deep ties with the school, so he's going to come and speak to whomever shows up to the, you know, to the... So he's going to come and speak to, um, whomever shows up to the, you know, to the juniors, uh, next Monday. Just moving over to building level, um, you know, this is going to be the third year that we've done the junior workshops. Uh, we have like two years of sort of exit survey data from the students about what they liked, what they didn't like. So we're continuing to develop these workshop lessons. Uh, there were some things that, um, came up in, at Harvard that aren't really worth mentioning at the moment, but that we might incorporate into these lessons, like having students sort of rank what they would like to see on campus, having the students act as an admissions committee as well, maybe even possibly doing some mock case studies with them. As a department, um, you know, we have access to admissions representatives. We have access to admission statistics from, from Bronxville through Naviance. We leverage that information and those relationships in a number of different ways. I think going forward, we've been discussing and I've been encouraging more of like a targeted, deeper, um, intentional, uh, dive into some of these, some of the data, um, some of our relationships. You know, um, as an example, last Thursday, the BC rep was in the building. And so, um, because I was emailing her last year, asking a lot of questions, she took it upon herself actually to say, hey, I'll be in town. Do you want me to spend a little bit more time before or after my visit with the students to talk to you guys about, about what's going on at BC? And I was asking her about students specifically and she said she'd be happy to do that. You know, and, um, this came up at the summer institute and it's, you know, what's unfortunate, um, specifically in the BC case, but it's a bigger thing. You know, I emailed her specifically about one student that I had questions about. I thought she, you know, fit the profile. She, you know, BC's definitely very, um, interested in students that are excited about learning. She fit that criteria in a number of different ways. So I asked her specifically about her and, you know, uh, since, uh, it's a combination. Since the Harvard case and since, uh, Operation Varsity Blues, as they are calling it back in March, the admissions scandal, colleges are literally destroying documents. They're, they're getting rid of documents. You know, I, I don't want to make it out like they're doing anything wrong because they're telling us this, but they no longer have old information at the end of an admissions cycle. So, you know, um, us moving swiftly and fastly, uh, fast is, is important. But this is just to say that, you know, even when you have like, you know, everything in your sight and you have what you need to, you, you have the questions you want to get answered and you're ready and you have the person like, yeah, sorry, actually, we don't have that anymore and, sorry. You know, and it's like, that's the end, you know, like you can't get to the goal line of, of what you're trying to get to. And, you know, at a school like BC where you'll, you're seeing a minute is the most popular school that students apply to over the past few years. You know, there she, uh, Mary Beth, I think they went from 2,000 early applicants to 3,000, to 6,000, to 10,000, to 15,000 early action applicants last year. And so this year they decided to move to early decision. And so that might change things. And she doesn't know how that's going to change things, let alone the students don't know. You don't know as parents, we don't know as counselors. And so once you think you kind of, all right, this is, this is what you should be looking for as my student, you know, they really appreciate a love of learning. Why don't you talk about this in, you know, in your actual, in your supplemental essay? You know, you could do all of these things, but then just like institutional changes are made, which are beyond our control, which are definitely not shared with the public because, you know, they're a private institution. And, you know, our best laid plans kind of go, go by the wayside. So we're going to continue doing that work. We're going to continue, uh, to Roy's, um, point of finding critical friends. We'll continue to build those relationships and asking colleges to, um, kind of help us identify our blind spots, if you will. And then when necessary, or if necessary, also engage the faculty in, in professional development opportunities. Because, you know, they too are part of this through college essays and recommendation letters. And, um, you know, we don't want to leave any stone unturned. You know, I talked about the data. Here's some data that I wanted to share with you for, for really like, actually probably one primary reason. First off, uh, Boston College and Michigan are the two most popular schools over the past three years. Clearly you can see at one of them compared to a national average, we're doing quite well, I would say. At the other one, we could be doing better. You know, and if you see below where I got a little bit, um, closer to individual GPAs, which I couldn't share due to privacy reasons. You know, it's not always about the grades. It's really, um, about the student. I did bring one thing, sorry, I should have taken this out when we got here. In, um, 2018 at Michigan, they accepted students with a 4.0 GPA. They denied students with a 4.0 GPA. They accepted students with a 3.7 GPA. They denied students with a 3.7 GPA. And I can kind of go on, right? There was actually one year in 2018 at BC, three students had the same GPA. Two of them were accepted, one of them was, was not. And so it, there's stories behind all those students. It is possible that that story is they were legacy, they were an athlete. It's possible. But it's also more likely just given them to schools that they just, they were different people. They were interested in different things. They have done different things. They had different experiences to speak to. And in BC's case, the third student with the same GPA, they didn't see fitting in as well on their campus as the other two. And then I just wanted to, I highlighted Richmond just because, you know, there are a number of schools and we have a very good relationship with Richmond. Ann was down there recently. We're doing really well, you know? And so the work, I guess, um, comes in figuring out, you know, what, why we're doing well, where we're doing well. And, and, you know, the opposite of that, why we're not doing well, where, wherever those schools are. And so, um, we're going to continue to go through with it, to go through the data and identify these schools and, you know, make valiant efforts to get some questions asked, to learn, to grow, to build relationships, to establish relationships and just in turn, share that information with our students and, and, you know, get these statistics to go up. For the future, um, you know, uh, the data is going to just be like a yearly sort of process, right? You know, I think it would be great if we got together after an early admissions, early decision, applicant pool gets results. So maybe that would be like in January. Then we got together again in May after everything regular decision came out. We started targeting schools to contact, you know, admissions officers work year round. And so probably the summer is the best time to have some of these conversations, right? Like, we're super busy right now. They're super busy. From January to April, they're reading, they're in committee. They can't, you know, respond to emails and have 30-minute conversations about what it is they're seeing. But, you know, those, those dog days of summer are the perfect time to, to, you know, to, to build those relationships and get, get some answers. We're going to be, um, I guess like cutting the ribbon on some new space pretty soon. I know we're going to have this like great multi-use conference room. I think, uh, just figuring out different ways to utilize that, right? We have these VR headsets for virtual college tours. I think we were also thinking about just like walk-in, drop-in hours in busy seasons, right? Like if you're walking on your way to the train, you didn't have an appointment, but you need to ask a counselor a question and somebody's in a meeting, but there's somebody there just to, you know, give you a quick answer or point you in the right direction, you know, during busy times of the season, if you will. Um, and then also obviously for students as well, just for them to drop in. And, you know, counselors are busy, they're in meetings, but they can go see whomever it is that's at the drop-in area. This Common App completion event, so in, uh, you know, March, Ju-, uh, May, April, when we meet with the juniors in the workshops, we have them start their Common App. You know, but we only have a short amount of time and we have a lot of different topics to cover during the, the series we spoke at the workshops. So I thought, you know, we start a little bit late compared to the country, if you will. Um, I was at a conference once and somebody was saying like in Arizona, like students are already into college by September. Wasn't necessarily colleges or stu- our students want to go to, but it like got me thinking like, they should be ready to apply to college by September. And to do that, like you really just, you know, you, the essays being done in, in the English class and definitely over the summer, you got to get your Common App done. There's like some nuances to it. I thought it'd be cool, the counselors are here. We should just call all the seniors in, you know, kind of staggered around practice times and what have you. And just like get them to get this all done. So we don't have to like, have these like, you know, 38-minute meetings with 30 different students about like, what do I put in this field? What do I put in that field? Like, it'll be done. And then lastly, but definitely not least for the future, I mean, again, we're, I'm open to new ideas, we're open to new ideas. We're constantly, you know, looking to evolve. I, I know Ann's been a part of an advisory board. I've been a part of an advisory board at a, at a, in my previous life at, at Bronx Science. So the idea is, uh, like, uh, an admissions rep from Iowa will have a Westchester Advisory Board. So the admissions rep from Iowa would come to Westchester, you know, um, stay at a hotel or what have you and just call all the Westchester Advisory Board members, school counselors together. Say like, this is what's happening at the University of Iowa. And she'd have 12, 30, whatever the number is of different school counselors, all in one room, all at one time. You know, fast, efficient, makes sense. So what I want to do is really like flip that. I want to call people from all over the world, um, and have them come to Bronxville. And number one, highlight, you know, some of this new space we're going to have and these interdisciplinary classes that I know are going to come to fruition. You know, talk to them about some of our electives. Have them sit in on Humanities Research Seminar, Bronx River Research. Have them get a feel for what we're doing, which is amazing. That doesn't have an advanced placement label in front of it because everybody knows what happens in AP Bio and everybody knows what happens in AP Lit. So a little bit of like a morning of classes. And then again, you know, an afternoon of how does this look across your desk, our profile? How do our students' essays look, our recommendation letters? Like where are you seeing that we can be working to improve? You know, again, that's not it, but, um, for the moment, uh, it is. I'm happy to answer, um, any questions you may have.
Any questions for Eric?
That was terrific. Number of things. Was there anything that you heard at Harvard that was a surprise?
I think really the, truthfully, and, and this happened in the case study and I brought it up. We had like three different sessions. So it was like different people in each time that were, that were leading it. So one of the times was Dean Fitzsimmons, the dean of admissions, who's been there for quite some time. The student was in Calc AB. And I was like, you know, at the, that point it was Bill. I was, you know, I was referring to him as Bill. The dean of Harvard, Bill. I was like, are you not worried about him not being in Calculus BC? And he was like, you know, he's, it was just like, it wasn't even an issue. Like it, the student, um, had demonstrated through the course of four years that the student could do the work at Harvard. So it didn't mat- like, I think a lot of times our students and parents get really caught up on like this one thing. And sometimes it makes sense because it's like something you sort of can control and some of this is very outside of your control. But like when it really comes down to it, it's really, really not about this one class that you took over four years. Because you, because, you know, because ultimately like that's, it's about you. It's about who you are. Like, if you've demonstrated to whatever school it is that you're capable of that level of work, they're not going to hold it against you that, um, you didn't take Calculus BC.
Second. You are way ahead of where we were. And we had, uh, Bob Laird, the retired director of admissions for UC Berkeley, who was a friend of a friend, come in and advise us on a number of things. And before I forget, which is why I'm not going to say this, I'm not going to come to you later. I'm going to say them now before I do forget them. Some of the things that he said to us tied, tie in closely with what I heard you talking about. The first was some advice, which I took to heart as a parent immediately. And when you were talking about the, the case studies at Harvard. He said, his advice to students was have someone read your essay who is a friend you trust. And, and the question is not whether the essay is any good, but if you didn't know me, would you know me when you? And to your point of if that's what they're looking at, then the essay, they may not want you, but at least do they know you? Do they know the real you?
Yeah, definitely. So, um, something like, you know, i- if after reading this, have I learned three to five things that I didn't know about you, you know, is?
The second piece is that he took a look at our profile and told us that it was absolutely pointless. That we looked like 500 super high achieving, um, high schools in the United States. And he says, that's not you. And throughout 95% of our profile. So when I was listening to you talk about an advisory board and identifying what makes, uh, Bronxville Bronxville and not like 500 other high, high achieving, uh, high ranked high schools, get that into the profile. Because when I pick up the, if I'm a college admissions person, when I pick up our profile, because you're not going to get 2,000 people to come here. And even if they do come here, they're only going to get a slice. But, um, I think Bob Laird's advice to us was really good. And it was embarrassing. He made us throw out almost everything. And then said, do a profile that says who you really are. And I, I, you're way ahead of us. I think that, but that should somehow or another come out in terms of our profile at the end. That if they haven't come here, when they read our profile, would they know how we're different from? I mean, I, I think out of the top 100 comprehensive high schools in the United States, not magnet schools, not charters, not, um, not like Bronx High School of Science, about 30 of them are from the New York area. So what, what, how are we different? Anyway, I'm, I'm in, you're like five steps ahead of where we were. It's nice.
Erin, did anyone talk about how hard it is for 16 and 17-year-old kids to, or students to write about themselves?
Yes and no. I mean, I think, um, on the admissions side, they understand that this is the college essay you're talking about, right? That they understand that this is a task that is unlike other high school papers that they have had to do thus far. And, um, that not everybody, depending upon where you go to high school, depending upon other factors, is going to produce the same quality of work as, you know, it's not all going to be equal. Having said that, I mean, I think here, you know, we have, um, this gentleman named Harry Bald, who happens to be bald, wrote a book, um, happens to also be, um, at least as of last year on the Horseman Faculty. Wrote a book about the college admissions. He was previously many iterations of admissions offices brown. You know, I don't know what his exact resume is, but it's extensive. He wrote a book about how to write a college essay. And I think he does a great job and he comes to speak to the juniors, um, during our workshop seminar. And then, you know, the teachers take what he's been talking about and continue to build on that in their own, you know, with their own style. And so I think, um, here, it might for some be like pulling teeth because like, do I brag? I'm not, I don't brag, I don't, I didn't do anything special. But they do really good work. I know some of it was shared with tri-states today. And, um, I think Ann said she was crying based on what a student wrote.
Actually Marty Brooks told me that he was brought to tears by some of the student essays that, that were read today.
And so, I mean, that's not obviously for all 135 students in the, in the senior class. But I, um, I, I feel confident in saying we give them the support and encouragement they need to complete whatever, you know, complete that portion. to complete whatever, you know, complete that portion. Um, you know, some students, you know, it's like a monster under the bed, right? Like it's so big, it's so scary, it's so important. Um, and it is important, but it's also like, it's also supposed to be fun. And I think for some that are like, that approach their work in that way, they find fun in writing the essay. Um, and, and we work through that with them of, you know, you should say more about thi-, like this is amazing. Like this work you're doing with the Bronx River Research is fantastic. Like you need to talk more about this. Like, you know, and we sort of build them up in our office. And then we hope that they go and like kind of follow our, you know, counsel. I think Ann might have wanted to.
You know, I was going to, to reject about, uh, this morning, a group of senior seniors read their essay. Nine students read their essays to the tri-state visitors. And, um, they were a very small amount of, of kind of work that has been done, uh, with our juniors in the spring. And I would, I would say that most of the seniors were able by the end of junior year with the work that they're in, where they were definitely able to express their ideas in their personal statement, where you could clearly identify specific students qualities within those essays. And I think we do a wonderful job, uh, in that, in that regard, I have to say. Uh, including with the speaker, with Harry Wild, as I mentioned. And then with the new teachers picking up and working on drafts and essays with the students. They leave us in June with a, almost a final draft of an essay. And as Sabrina said this morning, she polished her essay over the summer and the essay that she read this morning was the result of her work with us. So I think we do a really fine job.
What other questions can I answer?
Yeah, what, uh, what, there are a lot of schools in this country, right? And around the world. Um, and personally, I get a sense that, um, obviously we're in the Northeast. A lot of people here, uh, went to school in the Northeast and it's a natural tendency for the, uh, students to gravitate towards schools in the Northeast. Um, what if anything is your department, is the department doing to try to expand, uh, the outreach to, uh, to the South, to the West? I know that this person from SMU is coming. I think that that's very exciting. Um, but, you know, California's a big state, um, and there are a lot of schools, uh, there's, uh, and I'm a big believer that there is a cover for every pot. Um, and, um, and is there really a person named Harry Bald?
There is, I think Rachel can attest to that, I, I hope. Um, uh.
I mean, it sounds like something you, you know, like a joke, like sign in as Seymour Buss.
No, he has a good, he has a good joke that he leads with when he comes. Um, but, um, in terms of introducing students to new schools, um, you know, I, I wish I had the exact data point, but there is, it's like a really high percentage of students that stay within like 300 miles to go to, to go to college. Um, which is why also if you look at the demographics changing, like, you know, uh, colleges are worried about where those students are living and if they're coming to their institution. Um, you know, I think i- it's, it's tough. Number one, like, I think we could all agree, just the Northeast has like a very high concentration of very desirable prestigious institutions. Um, so there's that, right? So it's, it's, you know, I mean, one could argue part of it's like, why look to California? Cause there's so much great, you know, so much great supply here. Um, but for students that are interested in leaving the Northeast, um, I, I guess it would say would happen in individual meetings, right? Like, you know, I'm sort of like a, you know, I hate, I, I rarely, and I definitely hate to suggest to a parent to like fly down to New Orleans to see like one school for, you know, whatever it costs a thousand, you know? E- e- even if it's, that's not a big deal to somebody, like it's, it's not really like a good use of your time. So you got to kind of be strategic first, i- is, in my opinion, right? Like Colorado, California, just in terms of where you want to go to see what else is out there. And then I would say like, again, it, it's happening individually. So if a student identifies a school in the Northeast that fits whatever criteria it fits, um, you know, if a student's open to it, counselors will definitely say like, why don't you look at University of Colorado Boulder? Why don't you look at Pomona or, or, you know, Occidental, like whatever the name of the school may be, you know, further away? It's just, um, I think part of it sometimes is just, is, is location. Like it's, it's far away, um, those schools, right? I didn't get into this because it, it wasn't, um, it's kind of didn't come up, but just, you know, there's things like yield. Like they accept a certain amount and a certain amount come. Colleges track that. That stuff gets published in the U S News and World Report, um, which means nothing to maybe me or, or to others, but to the colleges, it means a lot. So they're, they have a lot of institutional sort of goals that they're trying to fulfill. So sometimes students that are applying to California schools, we have, um, if you want me to tell you, I can, I can, I brought some information here. I mean, we have a number of students applying to California. It's just, they're not always getting in and it might not have anything other to do than like a, a representative saying, is a student really going to come? And they do that because their yield is important to them. Um, University of Miami over the past three years has 36 applications. Boulder has 33, SMU has 32, um, Wash U in St. Louis, 31. Um, Vanderbilt, 47. I'm trying to look for something in California. Um, Berkeley, 21, uh, Stanford, 21. So I mean, it's, it's, it's just not as popular. Um, but, you know, I, there's, we, we do the best job we can to like lay out, you know, kind of like options. Like give them optionality, right? Like, and again, start local. And then if that, if that's what you want, if a school like this is what you want and you also want to kind of get out of town and meet some new people and see some new things, check out this, this, this and this, you know? Um, but not everybody can do that and not everybody wants to do that. Not every parent wants to get on a plane and do that whole thing. Some of them do and some, you know, so it's, there's a lot of different sort of reasons. Um, I don't, did that answer?
It does.
Okay, yeah.
Any more questions for Erin?
Thanks Erin.
It's been great, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.